I guess the first item on the agenda is public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the dais, begin by stating their name and address, or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes.
We do not have any.
Okay. So there's no public comment. We don't have minutes from the last meeting to approve, so we don't have anything on the consent agenda. So we'll go ahead and move into the regular agenda. And the first section is subdivision plats. Planning Commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to City Council. First case is FP 2507 Baker Ranch, Section 7. A request to final plat, 21 new residential lots as part of Baker Ranch, Section 7, over 7.627 acres in the single-family residential RS1 and low-rise multifamily RM1 zoning districts. Do we want to go ahead with the second case with this one and look at them together?
It's the other two that are the same.
Sorry, okay.
Thank you.
Austin.
Austin Reed Planner. This is the final plat for 21 lots over 7.6 acres as part of Baker Ranch's Section 7. It's kind of a western extension of Twin Mountain Drive. This is in District Number 1, Tommy Hebert's district, in the Country Club neighborhood. The zoning here is mostly RM1. There's a little bit of RS1 off there to the left, and the vision plan is neighborhood. So here's a look at the plat itself. You can see, for the most part, these are larger residential lots. Twin Mountain Drive runs along the bottom there. Vista del Sol is off to the west, connecting north-south towards Ruth Lane, and then Lago Vista is in the middle there. Here's a quick look at the zoning map. As you can see, it is mostly RM1. Just a quick note, RM1 does allow a multitude of structure types. We just ask that if they have something planned other than single-family residences, that they denote that on the plat, because it can sometimes cause complications down the road if plans change. A look at our thoroughfare. So Twin Mountain Drive there is actually a minor arterial, meaning they are required to dedicate their incremental half of 80 feet of right-of-way and 56 feet of pavement. That comes out to 40 feet of dedication, a right-of-way, and 28 feet of pavement. On the plat, they do show 50 feet, so they are meeting that already. For our local roads, Lago Vista and Vista del Sol, they're required for the full 50 feet and 40 feet of pavement. They are showing that on the plat as well. Just a quick note, driveway access points can actually be granted on minor arterial streets, so houses that are on Twin Mountain Drive won't be able to have driveways off of them. So our staff recommendations, staff recommend approval of the final plat subject to seven conditions and two notes. Condition number one being for the tax certificate, number two being for installation of a 16-inch water main and required service connections, number three being for the installation of a 10-inch sewer main and required connections, along with an analysis of the lift station, number four being for the drainage study, number five being for the construction of Twin Mountain Drive to the standards that I've talked about, number six being for the local roads, the construction of them to the standards that I've talked about, and then number seven, so sidewalks are required along Twin Mountain Drive because of its designation as a minor arterial. However, they're also required within the RM1 zoning district, so that means frontages along Ruth Lane and Lago Vista Drive as well. And then our two notes are things I've already talked about. You can't have driveway access points onto Twin Mountain Drive. They could be probably along Ruth Lane to the north instead. And then number two is that if they're planning something other than single-family houses, that they just show them on the plat. You guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Austin? Thank you, Austin. You want to speak on this case?
Russell Gully.
It's gonna take a little getting used to this.
I know. I can see what y'all are looking at, though. Good morning, Russell Gully with SKG Engineering. Would be happy to answer any questions and would ask for your approval as presented, and really thank staff and engineering for being accommodating and working through, trying to get all of these nuances of this area worked out, so.
Anybody have any questions? Thank you, Russell.
Thank you very much.
Rocky, did you still want to talk? Okay, then we're good.
All right, so we'll close public comment and open it up for discussion or motion from the group.
Make a motion to approve as presented by staff.
I'll second.
And a motion by Brittany and a second by Lyndon. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, second case, and we're reading two and three in at the same time, okay. FP 2508 Southland Hills, Section 27. The applicant has applied for a final plat for Southland Hills addition, a Section 27 property located at South College Hills Boulevard and Cedar Hill Drive. Two variances have been requested, one for a paving width of only 20 feet instead of the required 26, and a variance to place curb and gutter on one side of College Hills Boulevard instead of both sides of the paved lanes. The next case, number three, is FP 2509 Southland Hills, Section 28. The applicant has applied to final plat the Southland Hills addition, Section 28, property located at South College Hills Boulevard and Maplewood Drive. Two variances have been requested, one for paving width of only 20 feet instead of the required 26, and a variance to place curb and gutter on one side of College Hills Boulevard instead of both sides of the paved lanes.
Great, thank you, Kim Garney, Planning and Development Services Administrator. As you said, we're gonna do both Section 27 and 28, because they're right here next to each other. I'll go through 27 and then 28, and then we can talk about how they overlap. And you'll see that as we go through it. So Section 27 is a final plat of 3.165 acres. It is part of the Plan Development 2203 with RS3 underlying. This is at the intersection of South College Hills and Cedar Hill Drive, single-member district number one, Mr. Tommy Hebert in the bottom neighborhood. And then you'll see that Section 28 is just below that. It's also a final plat of 2.597 acres, same thing, PD 2203, RS3 underlying. This one is at the corner of South College Hills Boulevard and Maplewood Drive, same single-member district and neighborhood. So just really quick, let's go back, boop, and then boop, that's what we're talking about. They're right there. Okay. Here is the final plat of 27, final plat of 28. And both of these cases are requesting the same variance. So if you will remember, the standard right-of-way for a new local road is 50 feet width, and the standard paving for a new local road is 40 feet with a minimum of no less than 26 feet in any case. The incremental half for each would be 25 of right-of-way and 20 feet of paving, although the ordinance states no less than 26. So on both of these plats, they're requesting a variance on South College Hills Boulevard to widen South College Hills to only 20 feet instead of the required 26 feet by ordinance. So the 20 feet would be their incremental half, but our ordinance says that no road shall be smaller than 26 feet. The other variance they're requesting is to install curb and gutter only on the western side of South College Hills instead of both. And I believe also the paving, sorry, the other variance system. And 25 feet. Help me out here, what am I missing?
No, I think you've explained it correctly. Yeah, the paving would be the 20 feet.
Thank you.
Of paving. Is what they're requesting for a variance.
Perfect. Excellent. Wonderful. Thank you for that help. Okay, so there are six conditions for each plat. I'm gonna go over a couple of them, and then I'm gonna ask our city engineer to come up, because he has additional information that they have talked with the applicant about. So both of them will need to provide the tax certificate. They will both need to install the necessary mains and utility service connections. On 27, a drainage study will be required, and they will need to submit plans for the extension of Cedar Hill Drive. Oops, wrong way. And then in 28, same thing, the tax certificate, submitting plans for a water main, sewer main, and the drainage study. And I'm going to ask Kevin Pate to come up to discuss the two variances, also submitting the street plans for the extension of Maplewood.
Actually, we'd like Russell to.
Well, we'd like Russell to, okay, great. Do you all have any questions?
Can you just go back to the last slide really?
Yes, ma'am. Okay.
Good morning, Russell with SKG Engineering. So in talking through this, and this is, the South College Hills is kind of a unique situation. The property was divided years ago in kind of what would be a projection of College Hills going south. So this has just kind of been one of those, it's been sticking out there, and nobody's wanting to go first with respect to developing and having to build the street. So we were kind of, if we stick with the existing property line division as it is, it lines up right with the center of College Hills at the intersection of Valley View. So that's kind of the reason for our variance request on both the right-of-way and the street pavement. And so what we're kind of modifying our variance request to would be to construct a minimum of 21 feet of pavement width on South College Hills for both plats. And so what that does, that will ultimately, when the adjacent property to the east develops, they would theoretically come in and dedicate their half of the right-of-way at 25 feet, and then they would construct a minimum of their half of the pavement width, which would be 20 feet. But over time, due deterioration of the edge of pavement, engineering and operations is concerned about losing that 20 feet. And so we build it at a minimum of 20 feet, and over time, it degrades down, and we no longer have the minimum needed of 20 feet. So if we go ahead and construct an extra foot, maybe two foot of pavement, will move over kind of into our property. I don't know that we'd be able to get the adjacent property to agree to dedicate the right-of-way and do all of that, so it's gonna be easier for us just to kind of shift that over. If in doing that and working with engineering and operations, if we need to dedicate a little bit more right-of-way on that side, we're happy to, because there's an existing utility easement that we dedicated for some water and sewer mains, so it doesn't really impact the buildable width of those lots. So I guess what we're saying is, we would like to revise our variance request, instead of the 20 feet, to be a minimum of 21 feet width of paving, likely maybe to do 22 feet or so, just to give it that adequate width there. So there'll be that pavement, just in case over time through the years that does come apart and we lose a little bit of that edge, we still at least have a minimum of the 20 feet of pavement there. So would be happy to answer any questions, and would ask for your approval with the variance as amended for both plats.
And if it's okay, I'd like to just clarify that I said that 26 feet was the minimum in the ordinance, and Russell's talking about 20 feet minimum for fire code. And that is not in our ordinance yet, but it is in fire code.
Okay.
So Russell, as far as like the curb and gutter, you're still requesting it only be on the west side?
Yes, yeah. If we build it on the east side, then when that developer comes in, they would have to just take that out.
Sure.
And so, yes. And that's the reason, really, for the additional foot to two feet of pavement, is to kind of provide that edge, if you will, to protect if the pavement does that. Ultimately, when that land develops to the east, if we were drawing up the plans, we would probably show the saw cut and remove whatever pavement's deteriorated, if you will, to have a nice pavement seam when that develops.
College Hills cuts down to a local road at that point?
Yes.
Okay. And the minimum paving width is 40 feet on a local road, right?
Yes.
Unless there's sidewalks, which could be 36.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody have anything else for Russell?
Thank you.
Kevin?
Good morning. I like the side view. I feel less like I'm at the dock. Public Works is supportive of the alternative variance that's requested. Any questions for me?
Okay.
Okay, so you're good with the 21 feet and curb and gutter only on the west side?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Well, that helps.
Yeah, you just made it a lot easier.
Okay, is there any?
Yes, James Duncan, did you still want to talk? You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Then we are good.
Okay, so with that, there's no further public comment, and I'll open it up for discussion or motion from the group.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
With the 21 feet.
21 foot and curb and gutter only on the west side.
Okay. Curb and gutter on the west side.
Good.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second, and any further discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? 6-0. Thank you. All right, that does it for subdivision plats, and we'll move into conditional uses. Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to City Council. First case is CU 2509, 2323 Ben Ficklin. A request for a conditional use to allow household living on commercial property in the neighborhood commercial zoning district located at 2323 Ben Ficklin Road. Austin, it's your show.
Thank you. Austin Reed Planner. This one comes to you out of the Rio Vista neighborhood. We are in District Number 3, Harry Thomas's district. The vision plan for this lot is Neighborhood Center. It's about .179 acres. And as you mentioned, what we have is a request for approval of a conditional use to allow household living on a commercial property. We were required to send notices out. We've sent 27, did not receive any in support. We received two who were opposed. One of them did not mention anything, the other one said they would rather either be commercial or residential. Here's a look at your zoning and vision maps. On the left, we have our zoning. You can see this is kind of a small block of commercial neighborhood, surrounded by otherwise what's single-family residential. South Brian is there on your left side of your screen, to give you an idea of where this is. On the right, we have our vision plan. You can see this is a little cutout of Neighborhood Center, surrounded by Neighborhood. A little bit of our staff analysis, this is a concept plan that the applicant has provided as well. Property's gonna be operated as a retail space of sorts. Historically, it was operated as a restaurant, but they're required to go through the change of occupancy process now. They do wish to reside in a back portion of the building, though. We don't think that allowing as much would negatively impact any neighboring properties, and it's mostly surrounded by existing residential anyways, and it doesn't exactly represent an increase in the intensity of use. So we don't anticipate any adverse effects on the natural environment either. With that, we are recommending approval subject to one condition, that they apply for and receive approval of all necessary building permits, including the change of occupancy. Do you have any questions?
This property has functioned in this way for quite a while.
Yeah, it had been a restaurant, is that right, Ray? And then I think it's been for sometime, yeah.
But there's always been residential on it as well?
I believe it has functioned as a residence of sorts in addition to the commercial for some time.
And there's no new structures being built? It's just renovation of the front?
That's correct.
Okay, anybody else have anything for Austin? Okay. Thank you, Austin. We have any public comment?
The owners are here if you have any questions, otherwise, no.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the owners? All right, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and open it up for a discussion or a motion.
Move to approve as presented.
Okay. A motion by Joe and a second by Brittany. Any discussion? I'll go ahead and call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes 6-0. All right. Second conditional use is CU 2510, 1710, 1718, and 1724 West Borghard. A request for a conditional use to allow household living on a commercial property in the general and heavy commercial CGCH zoning district located at 1710, 1718, and 1724 West Borghard. Kim?
Thank you, Kim Garney, Planning and Development Services Administrator. As you mentioned, it's a request for a conditional use to allow household living on a commercial property. It is general heavy commercial. It's in single-member district number 5, Ms. Karen Hesse-Smith's district, in the central neighborhood. You'll see right there, those are the three properties that we are talking about. We mailed 27 notices, and we only received one back in opposition, you'll see right there. They didn't leave a specific reason. We did have someone call in that said that they felt that their taxes might be affected, but they didn't leave their name or the address. You'll see over to the right, this is the vision map, so you'll see that we're surrounded by neighborhood and that the future vision is to have the intensity of commercial usage go down to Neighborhood Center in the area that this is. We believe that it is compatible with the surrounding area. Right now, there's a mixture of commercial and residential properties, and as I said, we see that the future land use is Neighborhood Center. And there was a commercial property on this location, but our maps show that it's been completely vacant since at least 2020. So we feel that this redevelopment would be good for the area. So we are recommending approval with the same condition as the last conditional use, that they obtain all the required permits from Permits and Inspections Division.
Could you elaborate on what's allowed in Neighborhood Center?
Yes.
Aaron?
Aaron's gonna help me.
Sure, so this really is the vision plan there? So you see Neighborhood behind. So Neighborhood would support all types of residential, usually the RS districts, where Neighborhood Center can support more of the RM districts, as well as, I'd say, light commercial, small-scale commercial. The zoning for there right now is CGCH, and so it allows an actual zoning use of something very much higher. I think over time, this corridor there, because it does have a lot of traffic, doing some small-scale residential-style houses in that area might be very beneficial. Just to the left of the page or to the west is a neighborhood market. There's a lot of amenities right in that area. There is, as you can see across the street, there are some, what we would call maybe older hotels, that maybe have some long-term living situations from 30 days plus. And so continuing to revitalize this area and finding a way to do household living here continues to help that area develop and grow. Thank you.
We did not receive a concept plan from the applicant, but the applicant is here, and so maybe they can explain more of the concept if you'd like.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions for staff? Okay.
I just have a general question. So when you're asking for a conditional use like this, are you designating the type of residential? Like, is it RM3 or is it RS2? Is it?
We have not, and that's really because we're waiting to see what the concept is. At last month's Planning Commission, they platted all of those into one lot. And so the structure type, more than likely, is going to be an RM1, a low-rise multifamily, because now it's really one lot, and it doesn't make a lot of sense to put just a single-family home there. You might choose to do a duplex, but again, I think if they are looking to kind of maximize the space, to make sure that they have enough housing units that actually make financial sense for them to develop the property.
So it seems like, just kind of adding on to Liz's question or, yeah, Liz's question or comment, the conditional use of household living is pretty broad. There's not very much.
That is true, and I don't know if y'all recall, but it's probably been about six or seven years, out in the Mintwood area, there was a conditional use for similar zoned property. The Planning Commission does have the ability to say you can only build a certain height or a certain zoning classification, so if you wanted it to limit to low-rise multifamily, you'd say they'd only be allowed to do RM1-style zoning. If you wanted a more high-rise, then RM2 would allow a more high-rise. We believe that the developer's intent is an RM1, that is what they've been doing. But again, the Planning Commission does have that discretion to make that as a condition of the conditional use for household living.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions? Okay.
Erica Wildy?
Erica Wildy, Wildy Engineering and Serving.
Good morning.
I'm here to answer any questions. What do y'all got?
I have a few.
Yeah. Okay.
So just looking at the package, the setback on Borghard is 25 feet, and there's a five-foot setback on Van Buren. And I'm just curious about how you guys are thinking you might be able to address parking if you're gonna put multifamily on this lot?
We're working on the site plan currently. That's probably why one wasn't submitted, to work out all the setbacks and the parking. Obviously, we'll have to go through permits and inspection and all of that for that part. I do have a picture of some that they recently did. I don't know if that would help y'all. It's not a wide picture, but it's a picture.
I think, I mean, I have a pretty good idea, I think, of what's going on, or what, kind of what the intention is. I mean, y'all?
And I believe they would be fine if you wanted to stipulate, you know, low-rise, because that's what they're doing.
It's kind of what the plan is anyway, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, I guess that's my biggest concern, is just that that's kind of a hard corner with quite a bit of traffic, especially on Borghard side.
Well, and we're gonna kind of clean up the intersection by, we're required to do curb and gutter along that street there on that side. We were here last month for the plat, so we are gonna clean up, make some better definitions around that intersection of where to be and where not to be.
Yeah.
Is the parking proposed on?
On-site.
Van Buren or on Borghard?
Parking is proposed on-site.
Okay.
And if y'all recall from the plat, since Borghard is actually under TechDOT control, they're working with TechDOT for where that access would be, and we talked during the plat that they have actually a good driveway back there at the, I'm gonna say that the northern property line along Van Buren, and that would be ideal, because that's the furthest, but we're gonna be working with them through the site plan on that.
So if we designate that needs to be low-rise, like, for instance, I'm just thinking about a couple townhome units that have been built around the city recently, that also had unusual lots and whatnot, is that preventing the applicant from going, like, living room downstairs, bedrooms all upstairs? Like, are we, like, gonna hinder them from?
No, it doesn't, it does not limit it to a single story. It actually limits it to two and a half stories, which in our ordinance is 35, I think 35 feet, is that right, Ray?
But I don't believe he's doing 35 feet. It's just gonna be a single story for now, so.
Okay. I just want to make sure that if by chance you have issues with your setbacks, we're not limiting, you know, that you can have essentially a second story for bedrooms.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is one unit?
No.
No, it's multiple units, and we don't have the number yet, but it'll meet all of the area requirements and such that's in the subdivision ordinance and.
Okay. Anybody have any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have anybody else? Okay, so no further public comment. Open it up for discussion.
I mean, I honestly think that this is a great use of space. That area's been needing a little revitalization for a while. If you go down Borghard more towards downtown, there's been quite a few people that have fixed up some of the older buildings, have done salons and little boutiques and whatnot. So I think that it's definitely gonna add to the area. There's a lot of, like, walking traffic over there. You know, as I mentioned, as long as, you know, if we end up putting RM1 status on it, because it is a conditional use, I'm just, again, making sure that we weren't hindering them from going to a second story for a living space, so.
So would the best way, if we wanted to limit the height, I guess, the best way to propose that would be as a low-rise multifamily?
Yes, well, the RM1 zoning district is a low-rise. It also gives, like, single-family, two-family, those things, but it lists in our development chart a limitation on height. We always recommend two and a half stories, just because if they do a gable roof, you've got an attic area that could you've got an attic area that could push that up, up to that distance. I would say that the case at Bentwood, it was specifically said they can only do one story in Bentwood at that. So really, that, you could do it either way. You could say zoning district, or you could say we're limiting it to X number of stories if you chose to, with your motion.
Yeah, I was just trying to kind of think through, I mean, to Brittany's point, not limiting the availability of being able to set the structures on the lot in a way that you could still easily access it and have adequate parking.
Correct.
But also not putting a, you know, building looking down into people's backyards.
Right.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion or?
Okay, I will make a motion to approve, as staff presented. I will put the RM1 status in the conditional use, allowing the structure to be up to two and a half stories.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six-zero. All right, that's it for conditional uses. Next section is special uses. City Council has final authority for approval of special uses. First case is SU 2501, 1302 Kenwood. A request for a special use to allow residential and art gallery with a studio and a single-family residence RS1 zoning district located at 1302 Kenwood. Ray, that's your show.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry Planner. And this is a special use at 1302 Kenwood. It is .244 acres. And they are requesting the special use to allow a residence and an art gallery with a studio in the RS1 zoning district. It is District 5, Karen Hesse-Smith, and it is the Santa Rita Neighborhood. On, I'm gonna go with here, the, on the left, it is the vision plan, which is Neighborhood. And then on the right is the zoning. You can see it is RS1 that backs up to RS2. So we mailed out 25 notices, and actually, we received, one, two, three, three in favor over the weekend. They all did not say anything, except for one said that they think it would be great for the community and that it would help our city grow and prosper. And there is one in opposition, but they did not say anything. The one in opposition is 1225 Kenwood, so a diagonal from them. So staff, I'm sorry. There we go. Staff does believe that it is consistent with the zoning ordinance because it still will maintain the residential character of the property, and there are no adverse impacts on the surrounding property. It does kind of fit a community need. It is a cultural and creative asset within the community. It is right outside of downtown, so it'll kind of help be on the outs of downtown. So with that, staff is recommending approval. We do have some conditions, and that is that the studio and gallery may only operate between 9:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m., that he does have some invitation-only events. And so we're asking for a maximum of 10 guests at each event. And that a minimum of one bedroom remains exclusively for residential use with no overnight stays or short-term rentals for the gallery. And that the applicant obtains any building permits, like the change of occupancy, that will be required. With that, is there any questions?
Was this property previously a church?
Correct.
Okay.
About 20 years ago. The current occupant has been there already for about 20 years with this. The city did not know.
Just seems very arbitrary, like, it's like, I mean, that's like, that's people that are sitting here.
So my rationale, there are two daycares, one behind and one across the street, that also have special uses. And one of them is allowed more than 10, the other one is allowed only 10. So I kind of went with that number.
Wait, the daycare can only have 10 children?
Correct.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is not here.
So if we were to approve it, could we amend the amount of guests available?
Yes.
Is this something we'll have to come back through?
It will go to City Council. They have final approval.
And they can adjust the number of guests?
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, do you have anything?
I think that's my only hangup, is I think just the 10 guests is not allowing an entrepreneur to do much. I mean, especially on a weekend event. I mean, your daycares and whatnot are not running at that point.
I mean, who is in charge? I'm assuming it's until someone complains about it, is that gonna become an issue?
Correct. It would be, it would rely on the neighbors and everything to call and complain.
Part of our rationale is just the parking, but it is, if you goes back to one of the images, there is a lot of right-of-way for parking. Again, it's probably gonna be a short-term thing, you know, three to four hours if they have guests there to do a reception of some kind. So I don't think that staff is, oh, it must be 10 guests. But we were just trying to figure out for the neighborhood what may work.
Same thing if someone were to have a birthday party for their kid.
Right.
You know.
Exactly. Yeah, we had graduation parties yesterday, and there were 65 kids at our house.
My only hesitation with that, staff did consider that, however, those are a once-a-year thing. He has events. He did mention that he had three to four a month. So we're looking at a lot more often.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think in that neighborhood, it's not gonna, that's not a high-traffic area either.
True.
Ray, I'm sorry, you said he has events?
Three to four times a month.
A month, okay.
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 Any more questions? Thank you, Ray.
There is no public comment.
Okay. So no public comment? I'll open it up for discussion, further discussion or a motion?
I'm okay with it. I just think that, like, we discussed, I don't think it should be 10 people. Again, that's just my family alone sometimes with a cousin. So I think if we altered the number?
Yeah, I just don't know where that, what that number is. So I think what, knowing that City Council can grant final approval, this gives them an opportunity to come back and say, that's way too small. You know, they could come back and say it needs to be 25 or whatever. I don't know what the number is.
I would probably start at 25, and that would be my suggestion, but.
I still think that it's, I mean, again, you're hindering a livelihood of somebody by putting that arbitrary number on it. You know, what happens if 26 people show up? I mean, like?
Well, again, it's gonna be complaint-based, too.
Right.
It sounds like there's not much.
But, and then here's the other aspect, is if it's already been occurring and the neighbors really haven't said anything at this point, like, is it really an issue? You know, so I just think that we need to remove the number, maybe say no more than 100. I mean, like, 100 people's a lot of people, but, you know, or something like that. But I think 10, 25, I just.
I will, I will say, sorry.
25 people in this room.
Sorry. I will say, from a perspective from staff, is this is probably setting a precedent, because we know there are others that would like to do the very similar thing. Now, the structure's very large. I do believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ray, that it will go through a change of occupancy or will not. And so through the change of occupancy, the Fire Prevention Office actually sets an occupant level of what that'd be.
And that was my next question. So I, I mean, feel like that's so 50.
Pull that stipulation out, let it be set on the change when they do that.
Yeah, I think that we shouldn't be the people making that decision. I think it needs to follow fire code. I mean, that seems like it makes much more sense than, you know.
I also, I don't know, I think we need to have some form of restriction, especially since adjacent properties already have this, and it doesn't seem that that's been an issue going forward. I mean, I would hate, but, I mean, if we're following code, fire code, you know, I get that. But I hate to open it up to.
But at the same point, too, do the other properties that have a conditional use that restrict these to 10 occupants or whatever, did they ever have to change occupancy? Or they're just functioning? They did, okay.
Was that set by fire code or by, or do you know?
Theirs is limited to children, so it's not, it's a state daycare type.
Okay.
State ratio.
Okay, so they're following their, that code?
It's not really limited people. There could be more adults and parents and everything.
Okay.
Did you ever have the chance to speak to the applicant about this particular restriction?
I did not.
No.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve, as staff recommended removing Condition Number Two and allowing that to be determined by the fire code once change of occupancy occurs.
I have a second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brittany, second by Lyndon. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six-zero. All right. Our next case is rezoning and comprehensive plan amendment. City Council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. First case is Z 2517 McGill Boulevard and Gregory Drive. A request to rezone 17.342 acres of the Paul Ann addition, Section A to E, from single-family residential RS1 to multifamily residential RM1 north of the intersection of McGill Boulevard and Gregory Drive.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry Planner again. So this is north of the corner of McGill and Gregory Drive. It is 17.342 acres, and the request is to rezone from RS1 to RM1. The developer would like the option of duplexes probably around, along the back, maybe twin homes instead of duplexes, and then single-family homes. So this zoning allows multi, multi-different, multi, hmm, different types of homes. So this is District 4, Lucy Gonzalez, Paul Ann Neighborhood. On the left is the vision plan, it is neighborhood. And then on the right is single-family residential zoning. And so it would be just kind of taking, the orange is the RM1, and it would just be kind of moving it all to cover the area in red. We did send out 75 notices. There was one in opposition in your packet with the staff report, and then there was a second in opposition that I printed out and gave you a copy of. We have not received any more.
Hey, guys, we need to, speaking in the mics.
What I was asking, the owner of the property was a past client of mine, and I didn't know if I needed to recuse myself, even though our business is commenced.
Probably need to take a recess and let me, Brittany, to storm that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and call a short recess.
Sorry.
Well, we lost a lot of people in that recess. So I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting back to order. Appreciate that, taking a second. But, Ray?
Okay.
Go for it.
Okay, so I'm gonna just remind you guys that there were 75 notices mailed out, and we received two in opposition.
Sorry. Just to clarify, the one that's in opposition actually does, is not across the street. That, their property actually backs up to another property, is that correct? That's what we're looking at?
The one in the staff report is the one with the red star. It was 2713 McGill.
Because this one says 2721 as their address.
Yeah, that one I did not mark on the map, I didn't have a chance to.
So the 2721 technically does not, it's not even across from the property. Their property would back up.
2721. See, I'm, I think, I'm gonna go on a limb here. I think this, the numbering has been changed, simply because where the red star is, if I pulled it up on my map this weekend, that was 2713. But this map shows 2714. So I'm thinking this map is old.
Okay.
I guess what my question, and we've talked about it, is along that line on McGill, all of those properties are even numbers. And so you're not gonna have, on the same side of the street, odd number and even numbers on the same side of the street.
Correct, I agree.
And so this 21 that we got this morning, and then the 13 that you're speaking of where the red star is, in my estimation, are facing Regent Street and not McGill, and they back up. Is that, am I seeing this wrong?
Yeah, correct. I think this map has been updated with new.
I see, I see.
Yeah.
Thank you for the clarification.
I think 2721 is where the 2722 is.
Okay.
So.
I see.
Yeah.
Kind of weird. Okay, thank you.
So staff does believe that it is compatible with the area. It allows for duplexes, twin homes, zero-lot line homes. As they do, it would provide a buffer to the mobile home park that is right behind. And I don't know if you can see it in this picture. Yeah, there we go. So also, I'm gonna use this one. Back here, along the back of the RM1 that's currently there, are duplexes already. So again, it would kind of continue on. So with that, staff is recommending approval.
So just to make sure I'm on the same page here, that it appears to me from, that the opposition that was mailed in, those houses are already directly across the street from zoned RM1. Is that right?
Just about, almost, yep, right on the end.
Right here.
Ray, do you happen to know that structure type in the RM1? Are they single-family homes that are facing McGill? Or are they duplexes, or do you know?
Facing McGill, they are single-family homes.
Okay. And that's, that's one of the advantages and challenges of RM1, is because it allows so many structure types. And with zoning, you can't put conditions on, well, you must build the structure type.
I have a question on that, too. It seems like I remember something about if, let's say, they did build duplexes on, in one area of it, which they're allowed to do. Does it need, does it have to be consistent for the entirety of that block?
So staff is going to work with the applicant on the plats. The plats expired in January, they were not recorded. So he does have to replat. So we would work on, there are a chart that has specific lot sizes, depending on what type of structure you're building. So staff would work on that and try to, not really group together, but kind of make it consistent.
Yeah, the bigger challenge is zero lot line, because you're literally putting a structure on the lot line or within one foot of the lot line, which means your setback on the other side must be 10 feet from the other property line. And so if you happen to do a single-family home and you have five feet on either side, then you put a zero lot line, that really can throw things off.
You're kind of stuck.
You're kind of stuck. And so, and we don't anticipate the builder-developer doing that, but that really does come down to the plating process. This gives him the flexibility to choose. But when the plating process, the staff looks at those lot sizes, asks, just like we did with the one that Austin did about, all right, if they're going to choose a different structure type, we need to know that so that people in the future, when they may buy the lot, they know, okay, this is the only kind of structure type you could do there. So that it doesn't hurt somebody in the future if they just go and buy a lot. If this developer says, well, I'll sell these five lots off to another builder, they know what they could or could not build there.
Right. Okay. Anybody have any more questions for staff? All right.
The builder is here, if you have any questions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for builder? Okay, no additional public comment, then we'll close the public comment and open it up for discussion.
Frank, can you go back to the map? Shows different, and one more, right there.
And I will mention, as y'all, you can just barely see it up there in the top-left corner, Old Ballenger Road, we know that that area is, is probably not gonna be neighborhood center in the vision, we know that's pretty heavy industrial manufacturing, and so again, how are you buffering those zoning districts? And again, this, this zoning district kind of is a buffer to the more traditional single-family to the, to the south, so I think that's also part of the consideration of this case as well, is in 25, 30 years, if we continue to grow our industrial area out there, do we have enough buffering for that neighborhood?
I'm sorry, Ray, the duplex or twin homes or whatever we're gonna call them, they're going down Courage, is that the designated area, or do we?
Yes, down that.
Okay, alright, well.
I mean, since the area to the south is already low rise multifamily RM1. Yeah, and the, and right behind it as well.
Yeah.
And then, you know, kinda like, well, what we just talked about, if you put one duplex, then you have setback challenges pretty much for the entire street, so it gives some more diversity in the product that they can sell throughout that little area, I think.
Well, and I mean, I think it makes sense to just, again, you've got the mobile home park behind, you've got very heavy industrial, I'm not quite sure what that factory does, but it's quite loud when it is operational, but if you go to the front of Paul Anne, Smith and Selman, you've got townhomes there, but you also have some single-family, and it does act like a buffer from Dollar General, from Paul Anne Church and everything, so I definitely think it's consistent and it will separate those areas nicely, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Okay, got a motion from Brittany and a second from Joe, is there any further discussion?
Do we need a public comment?
Oh, sorry.
It was only just the builder, if they had questions.
So, I'll, no further discussion, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Pass is six zero. Okay. Moving on to zoning ordinance amendments, city council has final authority for approval of zoning ordinance amendments. We have OR 2503, Chapter 12, Exhibit A, Article 5, Section 509, fences amendment. Ordinance amendment to provide an exception to public and private schools to allow fencing in the front yard setback up to eight feet in height.
Voted on this and zoning, do I need to recuse myself, or am I okay?
This is not on a specific case.
Okay.
This is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, so it's not about a specific case or property at all.
Yeah, that was ones we just voted on last week, two weeks ago.
Right, that, so, and I'll kind of explain that, some of our rationale, my name's Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services, and so this is a simple, basically an exception within Section 509 that would allow private, public, and charter schools to have fencing in their front yard that's higher than what our zoning ordinance says is only four feet. Well, obviously, there were some state laws back in 2021 that said you need to secure your campuses differently, or there's some options to secure your campuses differently, and so we're coming into alignment with that, and while that legislation, I think it was mostly specific to public schools, we don't see our private schools and charter schools really any different, and if they chose to do that, we think we would do, we would allow them, and so that's part of the function of our zoning board of adjustment, when we start seeing a number of cases coming forward that has to get a variance, and there may be something in our ordinance that needs to change, obviously, this was something with the state law that changed that we should update our ordinance, and so we're bringing forth this very simple clause that would allow them up to an eight-foot fence in the front yard for those properties. Doesn't matter what they're zoned, it just is allowing those use types to put that fence height up to eight feet if they chose to. Any questions?
Simple enough.
We, we think so, but I'm sure there'll be unknown consequences somewhere.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Okay, so, I'll go ahead and open it up for discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Lyndon, a second by Candy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? So, that's six zero as well. Alright, next item on the agenda is zoning purpose and zoning districts. This is a discussion item, the purpose and zone, and zoning district establishment under the current zoning ordinance, an education session for the board and community. Aaron?
Thank you, Chairman, again, Aaron Vanoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. So, we're just gonna kind of go over just a few things in our zoning ordinance and why planners do zoning ordinance. The first thing I really want to mention is that most of the time, the citizens always think about zoning, and that's all the planning maybe does, but planning does a lot more than that. Obviously, you saw subdivision things this morning, we do a lot of land development, we set the precedent for the whole city with our comprehensive plan, which y'all see those things, the vision plan that comes up from time to time, and where we project our city to grow to and how we grow, we work on annexations and all of those things, but the core really does kind of come back to the zoning ordinance, land uses, what can be done on someone's personal or private property. So, I just want to give some highlights, so, under the Texas Local Government Code, Chapter 211, that's what kind of gives us the powers to do zoning as a city. We go through there, and it's really about the public health, safety morals, and general welfare, and then protecting and preserving places and areas of historical, cultural, and architectural importance and significance, so you can see how we, we work through the cultural district, we work through short-term rentals, we look through the sign ordinance, but it's really about the public health, safety morals, and general welfare, and then protecting and preserving those places, and so safety is circulation, just like on the Borogad project, what is that vehicle circulation? If we start adding, you know, 25 citizens there that have got 12 vehicles, how does that impact that intersection? And so, that's what our team looks at. Public health, you think about, so the industrial area we just looked at, so if there was a concrete batch plant out there that may make a lot of aerosols, and depending on our prevailing winds, does that blow across a neighborhood? Does that impact their public health in some way? Are we making sure that we have a sewer and water in all of our areas to satisfy our needs, those types of things? So, again, the, the Texas code gives us that, and interestingly enough, we're one of the cities that has had zoning for a long, long time. In the 50s, we adopted our first zoning ordinance or our zoning code, it's been updated a few times, not that many times, but it was updated in 96, and then our most current version we have is 2000. We have been, just like we did just a moment ago, do some minor updates to sections, we add an exemption, or we rewrite the short-term rental, or we look at the cultural district, those types of things. So, in our section, Section 104, it gives us our purpose statements, this is what our planners look at all the time when they're trying to evaluate some type of case, when they have a customer that calls in, or when they have someone that comes and walks into the, into the offices, what, what is it that we're trying to do to help them achieve one of these purposes? Promote the beneficial and appropriate development of all land and the most desirable use of land in accordance with a well-considered plan, and so that's where somebody may come in and say, well, I want the highest and best zoning for whatever they're doing, maybe that may be heavy manufacturing, but we try to evaluate, alright, is that really the best, or can we have a little bit lower zoning because of the surrounding areas, does that make sense? Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't, and obviously those, we bring those cases to you guys, we make recommendations, and then ultimately, our city council makes that decision based on y'all's recommendation, our recommendation, and does it, does it change or does it stay? Protect the character and establish pattern of desired development in each area, last case that you just looked at for rezoning, you're trying to, alright, what's the established pattern, what is, what is going to help the desired development? And we know in the housing market today, being nimble, being able to choose different structure types based on your client's needs is important, and if you're just stuck with one structure type, that may not always be the best, and so we're trying to find ways to do that. Again, minimize incompatibilities and conflicts, I really like this one, maintain property values by stabilizing expectations and ensuring predictability in development, that's what I always hear from our folks outside and inside that come to us for pre-development, they just want to know what the rules are. Tell me the rules, we'll be happy to follow them, but they want that predictability, and they want to ensure, and I know that all of our, our, our property owners are like, I want stabilized property values, I don't want maybe my neighbor three doors down to be, you know, $50,000 lower than me, but then my other neighbor being $50,000 higher than me, and how do we stabilize that? And that goes back to the zoning and the structure types and things like that, and then establish a process that is effectively and fairly applies the regulations, and that's really saying, okay, you go to staff, they bring a case forward to the planning commission, planning commission is citizens that are appointed by our city council who have their own knowledge, their own opinions, and say, this is what we think works in our community, and then that goes to our elected officials, and they make that final decision. So, this is our city with the zoning map colors, obviously, you can see that we did a lot of corridor zoning, you, if you've lived here for any amount of time, you usually can probably pick out where our corridors are, you see Chadburn going up there and Bryant, and of course, you see Knickerbocker and Sherwood Way, you can kind of see Houston Hart, and then, of course, this area out here with 67 headed out to Merton. Now, all those colors mean different things, the biggest thing, and it's hard to distinguish between the yellow and the green, but most yellows, all the way up to the orange and the green are residential, and so we are a residential community, we are a neighborhood community, we have grown that way, I mean, that's, we protect our neighborhoods, we like our neighborhoods, and then you see where we put in the different commercial, industrial areas around our city. I think our, our goal in the next few years is knowing that there's a high potential for up here to the north somewhere away, an interstate coming through and connecting over on this side, even if it's 25 years from now that it actually gets built, or 50 years from now, we have to start figuring out how we want that area to grow, because what we don't want is all the businesses that are down here, maybe on Old Cristoville Road in this area, if we zone some properties up there because the transportation is there, do they all move, and now we have a bunch of vacant properties? So, we have to just consider what is best for our community, and so that's one of the things, but the zoning map is very interesting, you can see there's a couple of pockets that we just don't have annexed in, right here is one that's pretty, pretty noticeable, and then, of course, over here in Bentwood, there are some other areas that they look like they're vacant, but they're hatched, those are actually our planned development districts, it's hard to see on a, on a screen this size. So, with, before I move on to our zoning districts, is there any kind of discussion about the purpose of what we do? Any questions y'all have for us or city staff? Obviously, I'm also, you know, talking to our general public that's out there, will be watching this on YouTube and, and things like that, and the three people here, two of which are staff.
I, I think I probably just have more of a general comment about, really, kind of the one that you keyed in on, Aaron, on predictability and development, and I think that's the biggest thing that I had to kind of get my head around when I first got on the board, was thinking about the impact of the surrounding area when you do put a certain type of business or allow a certain intensity, and how those could potentially work together or be, you know, detrimental to each other, so that's, that's kind of the hardest thing to me, to try to balance when you're thinking through some of these cases, is what, you know, the potential impact for somebody, and, and even future development too, by allowing like a concrete batch plant to go next to somewhere where somebody was planning to put a big residential development, I mean, that would be a pretty, pretty negative impact on that, those plans, so, anyway, I just, I think that's pretty pivotal to what we do in, in here, whenever we're looking at the cases, is looking at all the surrounding areas and what the impact could be.
Yeah, the, the biggest affordability challenge for residential or commercial is land development and predicting, alright, what is gonna go around me if I choose this space, and how much is it gonna cost me to get water, sewer, drainage, streets, whatever it is there, and those are the things that impact cost, affordability, and so we have to make sure that we're being very clear as a city to anybody inside or outside that wants to come and develop, here's what our rules are, and I think over time, that's one of our goals for our zoning ordinance is, when we get down to our zoning districts, well, what can I really put there? Because that's what they want to know, you can tell them it's general commercial, well, what does that mean? What kind of, can I put a Dollar General there? Can I put a, you know, an automotive body shop there? Can't, you know, what can I do? Because most people that are, whether they're mom and pop shops, they're saying, here's my product, I want to do this, they're not thinking about what does general commercial really mean, where we're looking at it at a more conceptual level of size, scope, intensity, what, what is the impacts to those other surrounding properties? And just having those good discussions with them to understand, this is where we're coming from, trying to meet this number four, trying to make sure there's predictability as well as protecting or maintaining property values in the area. Alright, so I'll go into our zoning districts, again, our, our state in Section 211 talks about the different districts of how cities can do that, obviously, our governing body adopts our zoning ordinance and sets up the different districts, and so it really says, these are the types of things that when each, each district, the governing body regulate the erection, construction, reconstruction, alteration, repair, use of buildings, other structures, and land, and then the other one is just talking about the, the types of kinds of buildings in a district, and so we even just talked about RM1 zoning, we have a lot of structure types that you can put in there, where RS1, it's just a single-family house, there's, and so that, those are the ways that we manage density, that's the way we manage traffic flow, when we say lot sizes within certain zoning districts, okay, that's a density, and how much, how many people can really be there? We know our world is always changing, it seems like we're kind of, back in the, right after World War II, there was a lot of these accessory dwelling units built in older parts, well, now we see that coming through with folks that are my age, maybe just a little older, that are trying to take care of their parents, and say, well, if they could have an accessory dwelling unit in my backyard, I could take care of them, and so we're kind of seeing that cycle come back around. A lot of cities are looking at density, say in our, in our infill areas, how do we concentrate some density because we're already providing services there, or majority of our city services, and so it's a, for the city, it's a better bang for their buck, if you will, so that we're not always expanding, but there are times we need to expand because that's a desire that some of our community wants, and so we have to look at those things. So, in our zoning ordinance, Section 301 establishes the land use districts, and then we go through all of these different sections that talk about our intent statements, and they're fairly generic, although I would say the residential is more descriptive than maybe the commercial, but each one of those intent statements is trying to guide city staff and our development community, these, this is what we mean when we say RS1, or when we say ranch and estate, or we say neighborhood commercial, which is probably one of our most confusing zoning districts, because what is neighborhood commercial versus general commercial versus office commercial, those types of things, and we'll talk about some of that, and so we have those that have the intense, intent statements, and then we have the specialty districts, which we all have seen planned developments, and that's really where usually it's a setback, it's a, a floor area ratio, how much floor area can you have on a single lot, which is how big can the structure be, or how small can the structure be? Parking, those kind of things come into that planned development, things that don't just fit the box, how do we make them try to find to fit the box? One of the things that we've always done is that you gotta be one acre or bigger to do a planned development, I think over time, we may reevaluate that, because there are some small lots, very similar to the one of the case that we saw on Borogad, if we did a planned development, we might have a little bit more flexibility to help them with setbacks, also maybe be able to, for us to say, okay, you can only Also maybe be able to, for us to say, okay, you can only do a driveway here or a driveway there. I mean, those are the types of things that planned developments can help you. But planned developments can be tricky too. I mean, you have to make a, there's got to be a reason why we need a planned development that you don't fit the rules. You know, that it can't just be, oh, I want a planned development. Why do you need to modify these rules? Is it in the best interest of all of our citizens to do that? Then we have our overlay zones in our districts, historic district and historic overlay. They're kind of two separate things. They have the same purpose, but one's a district, so it's multiple blocks. Over, the historic overlay could just be a single property. River corridor, downtown district overlay, cultural district overlay. And then our favorite one is the open structure overlay. No comments, Lyndon. Open structure overlay was a, was a, an effort to fix basically carports that were built without maybe a permit. And I think it worked for a time. I think that's an area we'll have to evaluate over time, of does it still continue to make sense? That's probably our number one case in front of our zoning board of adjustment because we have folks that just have a, a carport, an open structure, and they may not have gotten a permit or whatever the case is. And now they've gotten some notice that says, hey, you're not conforming. We got to fix, we got to figure this out. So. So again, here's those little acronyms. This is all the residential. You see the two on the bottom, manufacturing housing park district, and then manufactured housing subdivision district. Those are for manufactured housing. The MHP takes ten acres or more to do. Well, there's not a lot of ten-acre tracts within our city limits. And I think at that time, it basically kind of almost saying, we don't necessarily want these types of developments. The next one talks about just splitting something in two, but it has to be compatible with the surrounding area for the manufactured housing subdivision district. I do think over time, while, I do think over time manufactured housing may be an affordable housing solution in parts of town. We don't know where those are yet, we haven't really evaluated them. But we are like a lot of cities that have said, okay, we don't want you guys around, go out into the county. That doesn't always work, especially when we're dealing with workforce folks that want to be closer to their place of employment. They want to be in town, they want to enjoy the amenities that we have. Maybe we evaluate that over the next five years when we're talking about affordable housing and what really makes sense. These are our commercial. So if you look at this, it's from least intense to most intense. Although I'd say general commercial, heavy commercial kind of is above light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing. But I put it at the bottom and I'll tell you why in just a moment. But neighborhood commercial district, office commercial, general commercial, heavy commercial, then CBD, which allows a lot of things, office warehouse district, light manufacturing district, and heavy manufacturing district. And then we have this carryover called CGCH that even in ninety-six and two thousand, city council directed, let's start getting rid of these zoning districts that are CGCH. We haven't done a lot of that. We've done some. We did a big case maybe last, last planning commissioner, the planning commission before, over on Knickerbocker, where all the properties were built out except one. And we said, okay, they're already built out, let's go ahead and change the zoning to what makes sense from light manufacturing, and those kind of things. So we don't go and really rezone properties with, usually without permission of the property owner. We could legally, but we just don't as a practice by our city do that very often, unless we feel like there's some real imploring reason too. And then again, that comes back to you guys and then to city council. So here's just some areas around. You can start seeing what the colors mean. So you see the, this is what I would love to call someday the Coliseum district up in this area, and, and really hope that area continue to grow and support our coliseum and the activities there. But you can see it's towards the north end of town. You can see Chadburn that kind of cuts across there. Bryant comes around, swings around over on the, on the left side. Interesting that we have ranch and estate in between those two corridors. That would be very unusual in, in most cities, that that would be a little bit different in density. And then you have your RS1. And you can see just little pockets here and there with the yellow and the orange. Those are also residential style districts, but they're probably more, whether they're RS2, or you get to the orange, you get to RM1 and things like that. This is just a Sherwood Way corridor, just coming right out of downtown. You can get to the, the first curve there. You can see that it's been CGCH. I think somewhere along the way, we might do a corridor study and say, all right, what do we need to do for this corridor? Because most of those buildings will always have challenges with parking. Tech dot would really like to take away all of that pull-in parking. And so we've got to find a way to zone it to where, we don't, we, how do we help them without just tearing down buildings? Some of the buildings may need to be torn down, maybe not. But how do we still preserve the area? You can see, I think that first section might still be Angelo Heights, and then Santa Rita keeps coming back to the south. You can see there are some different zoning districts around the corridor, which is what would, you would normally see is as that corridor expands out, the zoning district becomes less and less intense. This is Houston Hart on the east side of town. You can see Shannon right over here that has a planned development in downtown. And then, of course, Houston Hart. You can see this heavy manufacturing, light manufacturing, and it is predominantly because of our railroad that goes through there. And we actually have some of those uses, particularly on the north side, but there are some uses on the south side through there. It's also where the East Angelo Draw comes through, which I've always thought this is something that cities have always done. And so the East Angelo Draw kind of comes in through here. You can kind of see the big culvert there and, and comes through and goes across Bell Street, trying to get back to the Contra River. For some reason, cities have always put heavy manufacturing, light manufacturing in floodplain areas. Not necessarily the smartest idea, but it's just what we do. Not sure why, but you talk about intensity and things that could be dangerous. We really don't want those in your water supply, whether they run off or however. And those are things we just have to think about in our future. When we're really planning our future for the next fifty years for kids and grandkids that are going to be the leaders of tomorrow in our community, how are we protecting them and our resources? You can see over here, as we get closer to the connection with the loop that comes around, we start getting a lot of different types of zonings in through there, trying to allow for one of the entrances of town to have different styles of development when you come in. So let's talk residential. It's designed for household living, usually centered around the number of primary structures. Primary structure is your living house. It talks about the different structure types. We talked about that of our, what kind of structure types can someone build in RS3? Those types of things. Lot size requirements, setbacks, and overall density. RS districts can mix with the following commercial districts being up to neighborhood commercial, the central business district, and now in the cultural district. So those RS districts can mix with those things as well. Sometimes I always think that it's only RM and RM2 that can mix with commercial. But we, we see with our vision plan, if it's neighborhood right up next to them, they can mix in particularly with the neighborhood commercial, neighborhood center, those types of things, as well as our central business district allows for single-family residential or higher intensities for residential as well. The RM districts, they, they can fit with almost everything except usually light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing. And that's really just because of the separation of the types of intensity of the, of the different uses. Doesn't mean they couldn't do it, it just means that usually that these are the ones that they will mix best with. So when we see something that maybe zone CGCH and somebody brings to us, hey, we want to do an RM district there, we think, okay, that's probably going to work because they probably have some general commercial stuff. They might have some heavy commercial stuff. And if these are people wanting to get to work easily, maybe they're wanting to go and shop easily, that they may not have as much disposable income and have two vehicles, they have one vehicle, and so they're sharing things. How do we make that easier for some of our workforce folks to get to where they need to be? So here's the challenging group is neighborhood or is commercial. So again, we kind of start at the top with the lowest intensity commercial. And in our zoning ordinance, it is, it does come down to some interpretation at times. And so that, that's one of the things that we kind of identified at the front. How do we create that predictability? And so, and I think that's with training with staff, training with this group to be consistent about these, this type of land uses. But neighborhood commercial is limited retail and, and service for the routine needs of residents in the immediate neighborhood. So when I think of that, and we, we look at and we have allowed a Dollar General, for example, to go into Paul Ann, and they zoned neighborhood commercial because they're really there to satisfy the needs of that immediate neighborhood. Now, there may be other folks that come off of Pulliam in some areas that come over there because it may be convenient and close. But again, convenience stores, small restaurants without a drive-through, trying to lessen the intensity, small grocery, household goods, those things that are trying to service the routine needs of residents in an immediate neighborhood. So office commercial, and it specifically says, talks about development of business, professional, and financial offices. And so kind of vague. What does that mean? Is that, say, a Edward Jones? Is that a dental office? Is that a eyeglass? Is that Verizon? And we would say, yeah, that's probably all office commercial. Where you're pulling up, you're going to buy a service or some, something there at that facility. General commercial would be a higher intensity. So you're looking at something that has a larger floor area than neighborhood center or office commercial. And so you think about those facilities that are probably twenty-five hundred square feet or less. Now you're looking at something twenty-five hundred to maybe seven thousand square feet for, for a general commercial. The challenge with general commercial, it's limited outdoor storage. So you think about a tractor supply. Okay, it probably doesn't fit general commercial because of their outdoor storage. While their size of their building, I don't really know how big their buildings are, maybe ten thousand. They're probably going to be close. Most of us think of them, well, they're just a retail store. I mean, that's what they're, they are. But under our zoning, it says they have a limited to twenty percent of outdoor storage. And so if they're a business that has outdoor storage, well, maybe heavy commercial is a better fit. Like where a Lowe's and a Walmart would go, or maybe even an HEB because of the volume, of the size of their building, the amount of people that are coming to them. But then you kind of look across the, well, the different restaurants, well, those are probably all general commercial because the size and volume, although intensity can be high around Chick-fil-A and Starbucks at certain times of the day, they still probably fit that general commercial feel. So heavy commercial is really the highest intensity commercial. So if you can think of, all right, what, what is commercial? But it's really designed of goods and services. What are we doing with goods and services that the consumer can get, whether it's the direct consumer or wholesaler? And that's kind of where it talks about heavy commercial with wholesale trade, large floor areas, warehouses, repair service, heavy and bulk items, significant outdoor storage, your automotive repair facilities. That's a heavy commercial use because you may have ten vehicles waiting on something. It's not, not your quick lube centers or your quick brake job, folks. It's those that, all right, I got, you got to put a new starter on this one, or you've got to really rebuild the engine, or whatever the case may be. Central business district? Go ahead, man. Yes?
I was thinking about, like, what, what is the mall?
The mall is general commercial, heavy commercial. It is CGCH.
I just was kind of amazed at the amount of outdoor storage that the new Murdochs has. And I was like, how is this?
Well, that's, that's because they have heavy commercial, it's unlimited outdoor storage. And so that's, that's the challenge is for facilities like that, and I would say malls in general across the US are trying, not just US, but trying to figure out, how do you diversify? And become, stay relevant? Because not as many people go to the mall anymore. And that's why a lot of those stores have an outside entrance. They just want to run into that one and come back. I would say from a pure planning standpoint, you would, you wouldn't want all that outdoor storage there in a high-profile area. At the same time, if they're successful, that may work out really well for our community. And so that's where we have to balance what is, what is best. The zoning allows it, so we can't, we're not going to stop it. And so it, and hopefully they're very good stewards of that outdoor area. Because we know outdoor areas can always catch trash. I mean, we have wind that blows. And so hopefully they're very good stewards of that. So our central business district, here, basically on the north side of the, of the Contra River. Really everything except manufacturing, industrial, and heavy commercial. It also allows, and it specifically talks in there about recreation and entertainment. Our central business district really is one of our recreation and entertainment cores for our community. And that's usually talking about the business uses, not necessarily parks and recreation, but what are our, and of course, we have the, the Contra River, and we have lots and lots of recreation going along there. But it's also about the entertainment that we have in the central business district with restaurants and some bars and some theaters and some things like that that really help make our community a, a nice place to come and be. Then on the, the backs, the, the rest of it is again CGCH. Again, in the passages of two thousand, they said, hey, we, we don't want those to continue. And in fact, we don't allow, the ordinance specifically says you cannot zone to that district. You'd have to pick one or the other. So with our tiers program, our tax increment and refinancing zone, that's one of the policy statements that if you're CGCH, you have to rezone. Tiers will pay for it. You just choose whichever one you fit the best in. We still evaluate, what is the underlying vision plan? Are we moving in the right direction we thought we were, or do we need to change those things? Office warehouse, designed for self-storage units, limited truck traffic with an integrated office, often used as contractor yards in the zoning district. So a lot of our contractors that have, they're going to keep some supplies there. They're not going to always keep them out on their construction site. This is a zoning district that has become very popular with them. In fact, we don't have as many self-storage units in office warehouse anymore. They're normally heavy commercial. And part of that is because some of them want to do RV storage or boat storage, outside uncovered, whatever it may be. And then the difference between light manufacturing, heavy manufacturing is really about how much of a nuisance, how much of a danger is it of whatever you're producing? When you're doing the process, when you're making whatever widget it is, how dangerous is that? So our, what's the pickle place out there on Bell Street? Talk, Talk of Texas. Probably not a heavy manufacturing unless you're allergic to pickles. And so I don't think there's going to be too many processes there that are too bad. But you think about some of the heavy manufacturing where they're breaking down different old steel pieces, and they're having to get out batteries and all these types of things out of vehicles. Well, that's probably heavy manufacturing. And then, you know, how does it affect those zoning properties around it?
Like battery storage facilities and all of that? And where, where do those fall in again?
Right now, we would logically say they definitely fit as a heavy manufacturing based on the, the chemical makeup of whatever the battery is. Most of them use lithium, there's some other different ionized salts that they may use. But it's because of those chemicals could, could get out to different areas. So we allow them by right in heavy manufacturing. We probably, if they came to us and they were in a light manufacturing, we'd probably recommend to rezone that manufacturing. We have not brought forth something that says, okay, we can get a special use or conditional use. A special use, we could do at any time, just like we did with the, the household and the art studio. We could do that, then take that to city council and say, well, they really want to do this here. What does that mean? We just then evaluate it. But I think battery energy storage is also something, they look at wherever those AEP substations are and how do, how can they feed back to the system? And so sometimes our, those AEP substations are right in the middle of a neighborhood. And so maybe that's not the best unless there's some protections we can do for the neighborhood. Are they small in scale? Or are they really big in scale? And those are the questions we have to go through.
Okay, thank you.
I think this is my last slide, and I went through a lot of stuff fairly quickly because I, I know you had a sort of long agenda today. But what kind of questions does it generate? Or, or are there other topics that we want to bring forward to discuss and, and talk about?
Thank you.
Glad to do it. I mean, Brandon's always ready to come and teach something. He's like, no, no, stop. But if there's any time y'all want to, to, I mean, there's a whole nother subcategory of, you know, we get these intense statements, and then it breaks it down into even more detail and more detail, and has this process that you go through for staff to say, all right, well, this is where we think it best fits. And then we bring it to you guys and say, we think it best fits here, here's why, here's our rationale. Y'all say, eh, maybe we want to tweak it, maybe we don't want to tweak it. We send it on to city council, or if it's y'all's decision, say, okay, this is, this is what we want to do for our community. So it's really important that we all keep these things in mind, keep learning on them. And I think it all goes back to those purpose statements of, well, why are we here? And it's really for our community. And one thing that I always remind myself about, as well as staff about, is that this isn't always about just that individual that walked in. It's about what is that? It's about what is that individual doing in that little neighborhood to, to be compatible? To be, to work things out. And we, and our staff has done a great job of trying to, how do we work things out to make this move forward? So I really appreciate their effort and the things that they do on a day-to-day basis. I mean, they're talking to citizens every single day. Can this work? And if not, where can it work? And they work through that all the time. So with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Thank you, Aaron. That's, that was, that's helpful and appreciate you taking the time to do that. Uh, so I guess that's our planning director's report as well, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So next meeting of the planning commission is scheduled to begin on Monday, June sixteenth, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM in the East Mezzanine at City Hall at seventy-two West College Avenue. And I will... Oh, and I guess we'll have our minutes for the last meeting at that meeting as well. And so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.